The meeting's over, would everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation? Let's the flag.
Flag will be lifted to the flag of the United States.
Like to welcome everyone for coming this evening. There is a log in the back of the room. If there's something you would like to discuss, there will also be a public comment section, part of the agenda. If anyone has something they'd like to comment during that time, please raise their hand. To address the board, either here in the room or via the Zoom meeting. Prior to the meeting, there was a session, there was an executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters. And this meeting is being recorded. With that, Ricky roll call, please.
Michelle Batts, here. Randy Birch.
Here.
Al Darian.
Here.
Michael Hess.
Here.
Cecilia Holt.
Yeah.
Dennis Ritter.
Here.
Eric Johnson.
Here.
Carl Nolte.
Here.
Charles Scher.
Here.
Thank you, Ricky. Our next order of business will be the approval of the minutes from the April 6, 2021 school board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Come on.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Ritter, a second.
Motion a second. Any comments, questions, corrections regarding those meeting minutes from the April 6th school board meeting? Hearing none, roll call, please, Ricky.
Michelle Batts.
Yes.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Present.
Carl Nolte.
Yes, so approved. Next is item four, the treasurer's report. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. This is the treasurer's report for March 2021. The month began with a cash balance of $10,672,966.21. We had receipts of $1,381,049.61. Paid bills and payroll of $4,637,400.44. Leaving us with a cash balance at month end of $7,416,615.38.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Ritter, move.
A motion. So that's any comments or questions for Mr. Miller? Hearing none, roll call, please, Ricky.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yes.
Carl Nolte.
Yes, so approved. Next is item five, approval of bills for payment. Item A, ratification from the general account, including manual checks in the amount of $2,689,74.63. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
The motions are a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding number five, A, the ratification of spending from the general account? Hearing none, roll call, please, Ricky.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yes.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Carl Nolte.
Yes, so approved. Next is item B, approval in the amount from the general count in the amount of $759,899.3. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Ritter, move a second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding item five B, the approval from the general count, bills for payment of the, for that amount? Hearing none, roll call, please, Ricky.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yeah.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Carl Nolte.
Yes, so approved. Next is item six, communications and reports. We'll start with the superintendent's report, Mr. Tim Chatton.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Superintendent's Quitsdown Good News Report, short but successful report. Here this week. First, we start with the middle school science Olympiad. Middle School Science Olympiad led by Mr. Bernie Boyle competed on Saturday, April 10. And proud to say that the Quitsdown Middle School team placed second in the state in the two A division. Very, very successful within that division of smaller schools in the state, placing 21st out of 36 overall. Throughout the state of Pennsylvania, but second in the two A division. Congratulations to the science Olympiad team. To call out some of our individual success stories, anatomy and physiology, Chloe Heck and Emily Miller. Disease detectives, Anna Nygaard and Karis Herlen, dynamic planet, Anna Nygaard and Emily Sprinkle. Experimental design is Kara Herlen and Anna Nygaard Emily Miller. Game on, Scott Ashman and Anna Nygaard. Heredity, Emily Miller and Karis Herlen. Meteorology, Emily Miller and Chloe Heck. Ornithology, Emily Sprinkle and Chloe Heck. Water quality, Emily Miller. Chloe Heck, some very busy science Olympiad competitors there. And performed very, very well on that state level. Thank you to Mr. Boyle, obviously, for his leadership in directing the team through a challenging year of science Olympiad for sure. And he wanted to make sure that we thank some other individuals, including Mr. Brown, Mr. Ashwin, Dr. Drummer, and Kaylee Dur. Kaylee is the student assistant manager, 10th grade student, volunteers to work with the middle school students, helping to train them for their events. Organizes team documents, facilitates communication between parents and team, and has commendable time management skills. And much more. Congratulations to all, and thank you again, Mr. Boyle, for your leadership of science Olympiad. Congratulations. Next up on the good news report is BCTC Students of the Quarter. You know, I think, you think of the BCTC students and their perseverance throughout the school year. You know, everyone has persevered through challenging times, but you know, in most areas. Of studied BCTC, hands-on instruction is of great importance, and these students succeeded in attending and dealing with various instructional model changes. More so than we did here at Quitsdown, based on their need for health and safety at BCTC to become Students of the Month. And those Quitsdown students that are Students of the Month, Students of the Quarter, pardon me, is Cody Esquen in IT programming at West Campus. Malachi Askin, building construction occupations. Kayla Dre, video and media, media content production. Kaylee Hinkle, health occupations, level three. Prior Oswald, recreational and power equipment technology at West Campus. And Madison Warmkessel, health occupations. Congratulations to all students in your pursuit of excellence in your chosen field. That is our good news report.
Thank you, Mr. Tim Chatton. Any questions or comments for Tim Chatton? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the board committee reports. We will start with ECC and facilities, Mr. Birch.
Yes. We do not have a report for ECC. There was no update with respect to that on April 12. On facilities, however. Mr. Hoffman, who's also here with us tonight, presented regarding a pub mill for the art department. And that is on our agenda for the board to consider as a whole. Also, we reviewed the cost for the refinishing the gym floors. So the Miller flooring refinishing was discussed, and again, that is on our board tonight for the board to consider. Also, we reviewed a need to do seal coating at KES, KMS, and GES. In the playground, and for GES, that would just be in the playground, ground area only, but. And that is also on our agenda for tonight. I didn't see it there for a second, but that is also on the agenda for the board to consider tonight. We also reviewed a preventative maintenance contract for the HVAC. And that also was moved forward for the board, and it's on our agenda to consider for tonight. Lastly, we had discussion regarding the GES fence. That's fencing around the playground area. The current fencing that's there is beginning to age and is beginning to show. That it's in need of replacement. So we discussed the cost that it would be needed to fix and repair the fencing at GES. And also that is on our agenda for consideration of the board. We also had discussion regarding the McClure project, and their administration was reviewing with them. The renovations for the auditorium area. Specifically, there were some questions that needed to be reviewed and ironed out. Regarding the doorways and the entranceway for the auditorium.
We, and we just updated, we did need and determine that the entranceway, as far as the wood casing would remain, but the doors to be replaced. So we'll maintain that traditional look with the refresh of doors addition to.
And are we able, have we signed the contract? Oh, so. And with that being worked out, the contract has been signed, and. We've already had a gentleman's agreement that we were moving forward with other things, as if the contract was going to be signed. So that project is moving forward at this time, and that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Let's move to policy and curriculums.
We met last week and started with a presentation from Dr. Quinn with an equity update for the district. And she talked about the equity goals of providing professional development in that area, examining the curriculum. Our diversity, well, it's our equity, equity team committee, diversity in hiring practices, et cetera. She had the exciting news for us that the website that Elizabeth Orisham, who's a high school student intern, designed this great website full of resources that has now been launched, and you can get to from the website, the school district website, under the About Us tab. And.
Miss Holt, just to interrupt, not to, just, we found a bug earlier this morning, just that if anybody outside the district tried to click on the site prior to this morning, they may not have had access, just from a setting standpoint, so the setting was correct.
Oh, great. Yes, I actually was wondering about.
Only KSD Gmail folks were able to access it previously due to the settings.
Right, but that's, that's been taken care of, so now it's available publicly, and thank you for that. And Dr. Quinn also talked about the tech side of the equity of access, and we now have our one-to-one district for all students, right, Dr. Myers? That's great. And there's a high school equity, equity team as well, and they're going to be starting a student ambassador program. And then on the policy side, we reviewed and moved for first reading five policies which are on the agenda this evening. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you, Ms. Holt. Let's move to BCIU, Dr. Ritter.
I was, I was unable to attend our meeting. It was last Thursday. Something came up last minute for me, and I wasn't able to even attend virtually. So the reports are in our packets of information for this, for this evening, so I commend those to you.
And we'll move to BCTC, Mr. Scher.
Yes, our last meeting was on Wednesday, March 24th, at the East Campus of Danone. I did a program tour of the cosmetology program. And some. It was a relatively brief meeting, then the approved to purchase of some vehicles to replace some outdated vehicles. Approved a technical academy agreement with RAC, as well as a articulation agreement between RAC, Reading Muhlenberg Technology Center, and BCTC for health occupations. And also approved the school calendar and staff and administrative calendars for next year. And also wanted to echo. The superintendent's report, the news report of our, number of our Quitsdown students were awarded the BCTC Student of the Quarter. So great job to all those Quitsdown students.
Great, thank you, Mr. Scher. First kind of tax.
The committee met, we. The auditors were there, they presented their report. There was, it was a clean audit, unmodified opinion. They presented the financial reports, and also there was a legal update about some litigation. That was it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and last but not least, PSBA, Ms. Holt.
I have just really one thing to bring up, which is that they're having in a spring legal roundup, which is a webinar that you can register for on. It's being held on Wednesday, the 28th, in the afternoon. There are a lot of topics on there that seem of particular relevance to our district at the moment. I am going, I actually just sent a message to see if it's going to be recorded, because I would like to hear all the information, but I have several conflicts. So if anyone else is interested, free to register through PFBA for board members.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Any, anyone have any comments or questions regarding the board committee reports? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to new business. We will start the new business section, section seven, with item A, personnel, and we will take one through four together as one item. Do I have a motion regarding item A, personnel?
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding? Item A, numbers one through four for personnel. Hearing none, roll call, please, Ricky.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yes.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Carl Nolte.
Yes, so approved. Next is item B, policy maintenance, and there are five policies listed here.
Could we take 123 separately, please?
The very first one separately?
Yeah, let's do, let's approve the others and then go back.
Okay, so let's, okay, we'll start with item B, policy maintenance, is the recommendation of the policy and curriculum committee that the board of school directors approve the first reading of the following policies. And I will jump to item two first, policy, policy 123.2, sudden cardiac arrest. Policy three, number three, excuse me, policy 332, working periods. Number four, policy 803, school calendar. And number five, policy 907, school visitors. Do I have a motion regarding those? That policy maintenance, those four.
So moved.
Ritter, second.
A motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding those policies? Hearing none, roll call, please, Ricky.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yes.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Carl Nolte.
Yes, so approved. We will now go back to the first line item for policy maintenance, is a recommendation of the policy and curriculum committee that the board of school directors approves, approve the first reading of the following policy, and that would be the first one listed, their policy number 123, interscholastic athletics. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Motion a second. Comments, questions, discussion around policy 123.
Yeah. If there's a part of that policy that holds athletes to a higher standard of behavior out of school than any other students in terms of allowing them to participate in that sport. And while I have some objections on that level, I think my principal objection is the way it's often applied, not always, but often applied. In fact, in our discussion a couple of meetings ago, Dr. Lever said that students that behave in such an egregious manner as this example he was giving did, did not deserve or were unworthy of representing their school in a sport. And I think that's the part I have the greatest problem with. I think if you check with my former students, Mike, Michelle, no one ever accused me of being on the permissive side of student discipline or being somewhat lenient. But the purpose of punishing a child has got to be to change the behavior of the child. And that's not what we're doing here. We're saying that because of some behavior, the kid is somehow unworthy of representing the school. That's a heck of a standard for a teenager. I, I just object to that whole basic approach. There is one exception that I came up with, and that would be if a team gathered somewhere off campus to engage in some sort of ritual hazing of usually the younger students. That certainly is something that is perhaps hold their participation in their sport accountable. But, but this policy speaks of a nexus to the school, whatever the word nexus means. I would prefer that it reflect a nexus to their membership in the team. Not just the fact that it happened at school, but for example, if they weren't on the team, they wouldn't be engaging in hazing. There's, there's a direct causal link between being on the team and the unacceptable behavior. And in that case, I think the school would be entitled to hold them accountable, up to and including their participation. I realize that with our current administration, perhaps the rule would be applied in a better way. But we don't legislate, maybe, I don't know, lawyers on our committee can, can, can comment, but. I spent many years on a borough council where the solicitor kept hammering home, you can't legislate common sense. The words of the policy, the words of an ordinance mean what the words say. And I would like our policy to reflect something like that.
Thank you, Dr. Darian. Other comments?
Ms. Ms. Holt, you had suggested some change to the language.
I did. So at the policy and curriculum committee last month, or last week, we talked about the parts of this policy that particularly the part that lists off-campus activities. And we had looked into where all of that language came from, and it comes from our existing policy 218, which is titled student discipline. And so the pretty much all of the wording, basically all of the wording from off-campus activities in policy 123 here that we have in front of us is taken from policy 218. And so today I sent over the suggestion that we add in a little bit more language from policy 218, because to me, it wasn't clear the transition from what we have the part that says the board directs that no student may participate in interscholastic athletics who has not done these following things. Academic eligibility, attendance. Adhere to discipline standards, et cetera. So I felt like adding in the paragraph that comes from policy 218, which says each student must adhere to board policies and the code of student conduct governing student discipline during the time they are under the supervision of the school or at any time while on school property, while present at school-sponsored activities, and while traveling to or from school in school-sponsored activities, whether or not via school district furnished transportation. And then go into the off-campus activities, which policy 218 also says that students must adhere to the code of student conduct and list those off-campus activities.
I personally would have, I didn't realize it was drawing on 218, but I would like to see 218 changed to the same extent as 123. They should, they should coincide. But I've, I've voiced my objection already, and that would also apply to the 218.
I guess I'm, I'm, I don't find the language objectionable. And I, and I don't, I don't really see how we are necessarily holding athletes to any higher standard than we would be holding anybody else accountable for their behavior. I guess I'm not seeing that. I guess I'm not seeing that. Well, I mean, I think there is an element of, you know, representing the school. And I guess what I am a little concerned about is. You know, we, we all see, you know, extracurricular activities as very integral to the educational process. But there is, you know, still an element of, you know, responsibility that goes along with participating in extracurricular activities. I mean, as we talked about at the one meeting, I mean, when you participate in, in sports activities, extracurriculars, you have to maintain a certain joint grade point average. I mean, you, you have to, I mean, you, you sort of earn the right to participate in those activities by doing the work and going to practice and learning them. And, but with that right comes, you know, responsibility. And I mean, I guess I'm not seeing. I guess I'm not seeing the concern that we are in danger of, you know, holding athletes or other participants in extracurricular activities to some higher standard than we would other students.
Well, if, if a student who was not a participant behaved improperly off school property, there would be no school consequences. There may be many others, but there would not be a school consequence. What we're saying is, we are going to give you an opportunity to participate in a sport, but we're going to yank that away if you don't behave the way we think you should out of school. And there have been districts that have, I think, been outrageous in the way they've used that, not ours, but other districts. And so I will again come down to, the word should say what the words mean. Now, yes, you've expressed the philosophy of discipline that is probably pretty prevalent. I just happen to disagree with it very vehemently. As I said in the note I sent. When you tell a kid, I'm doing this for your own good, that's not just a platitude, that's the only justification you have for disciplining a child. that's not just a platitude, that's the only justification you have for disciplining a child. And I don't see yanking away an ability to participate for an activity that has nothing to do with school, for an activity that has nothing to do with being a member of the team as being proper. Yeah, now grades, grades have to do with behavior in school. There are a couple, well, many consequences for not getting good grades. But as far as out-of-school behavior, I just as soon keep the school out of that.
Just everybody within the school setting draws their authority somehow directly from either law or school policy. You know, where our extracurricular activities have their own codes of conduct, you know, for student athletes specifically, or even within a team. The much of that authority really pulls from policy to say that you can have a standard that is higher than of other students. You know, you could take that to some, you know, even we talk about ridiculously high standards or low standards in terms of crimes or so on. But it can come down to how you dress coming to a game, you know, the, the following, the, the rules of a coach. Essentially, we don't typically look at them that way, but essentially any of those rules of an organization, they draw from the authority that policy gives them, you know, in terms of participation. So there is, there is that kind of lower level of authority that is needed to be a higher standard than that of what allows schools to either discipline or exclude from education, from formal academic education. Pardon me, I should clarify that because we all agree that.
I don't object to that part. Coaches hold kids to have training rules, perfectly legitimate. Again, the quote nexus is membership on the team. And that part of the policy certainly should exist. I didn't never objected to that. It is the part where it says any, I don't know, I forget the exact, actually, the, the language is, is misbehavior that somehow is a nexus to the school, which can be stretched a great deal, is grounds for taking away this kid's eligibility. That, that's the only part I have objection to, not anything to do with extra rules regarding membership on that team, such as training rules or dress code.
I, I, I just don't see the problem with the policy. Chuck articulates it a lot better than what I can, but there's clear expectations for our, our students, whether they're in school or whether they're athletes or whatever the case might be. And I don't think there's anything in that policy that should be shocking to anybody as far as what we require from our students and how they represent the district. And I think there has to be consequences for certain behaviors and with the policy, our administration at least has that authority to act in a certain way as opposed to not having any policy at all. And we could find ourselves in a situation like what happened in Mahoning Valley, where they're now in a federal lawsuit because the cheerleader got kicked off the squad after posting something on social media that wasn't very constructive, and I'll just let it go at that. But you know, these policies are here for a reason. And again, I think it's important that we have some policy to cover this and that will allow the administration to act in certain circumstances if it is needed. When I would just remind everyone, this is still just the first reading, so it still would have to be approved for a second reading. So if someone thinks there's some improvement to the language that's still needed, there is time to do that. But I don't think we should delay moving forward with getting a policy in place.
Yeah. And so I think also my interpretation of statement number four in that section is really the conduct has a direct nexus, meaning connection. That's how I read that anyway and interpret it. A connection to attendance at school or a school-sponsored activity. For example, a transaction conducted outside of school pursuant to an agreement made in school. So it, to me, it reads like there is, it's not completely unrelated to something at school, right? So there, there's that connection that is established before, you're not just making a decision based on something that's happened completely outside of school in somebody's home.
Yeah, the, the nexus, the nexus terminology comes from the Third Circuit ruling regarding social media and causing a disruption to school. And that there was a case locally, and I don't remember the year, early two thousands where a student posted something was suspended. And what they proved that there was no disruption to the school, then unless you visited that page, it had that there was no warrant for it. And it favored, the ruling was in favor of the student because there was no nexus to the school setting. So that has really followed for the last almost 20 years, been the language that's been used and applied is that it has to somewhere they have to cross, the behavior outside and the school setting have to cross in some way, shape or form. And that's obviously become more and more blurred over time as time and space matters less over what impacts us. But so the nexus has, and I think Dr. Darian's point is this, the nexus has actually become a larger area, this nebulous nexus, because it now crosses into school in any way, shape or form for causes of disruption. But that's sort of the history of the nexus terminology.
The most common way that.
So that was Mahanoi City, not Mahoning Valley, but same situation.
The most common way that I believe this has been applied would be, for example, if two kid, if one kid is invited to a party over the weekend at someone's house and there is drinking at that party, there's your nexus. And any athlete will then be disciplined by the school. Anyone who is not an athlete is disciplined correctly by people outside of school. The question that also becomes, suppose it's not the athlete season, do you deny them eligibility for the rest of their high school career? Do you deny them eligibility for the next season? It, it's just opens up a very nasty way where it is not always applied fairly, which is why, again, you punish children to change behavior. And in this case, it's often applied in a way that doesn't. I've also been accused of when I was teaching of saying the same thing three times. And I think I've done that tonight, so I will save you.
Any, any other, any other comments from board members? Again, this is first reading of this policy.
I'll just note for everyone who might be interested that the legal roundup that I spoke of earlier, one of the topics is discipline of students for off-campus misconduct. And other than that, just I don't know if we want to talk about whether or not to incorporate the suggested language that I sent over at this time.
I would, I would just think if there's a motion, the motion would be to either approve with or without.
I will, yeah, I will move that we put the language in that Cecilia brought forward today. And I understand, as I understand it, Cecilia, just want to clarify, each student must adhere to the board policies and the code. All of that would become number one, is that correct? Under off-campus activities?
No, I.
It seems to fit there. It replaces that. So, so we have a current, we have a current motion on the table, right, to approve this? Yeah, but I can make an amendment to that. That's, so you're going to make an amendment. Yeah, that, this motion is an amendment to that.
The suggested language actually is not just off-campus, but also on kid. I think that, that comes from the other policy, right?
Correct.
Correct.
The suggestion was to put it above off-campus activities and then you would only have, take out one, and then you would only have one through five then, right?
Correct. And that just makes it consistent with policy two eighteen and allows for the transition into the off-campus activities language.
All right, I, that's what I wanted to clarify, Cecilia. So I will move that as an amendment to the motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the amendment, and honestly, I need some help to define what the amendment is.
The, the motion, the motion is to include the language shared by Ms. Holt to the draft for first word, first reading.
So we would vote, I think. We have a motion, we have an amended motion. Right. And a second to include the motion, excuse me, include the language that was provided by Ms. Holt earlier today to the draft, the policy number one. That would be correct.
Which is what she read earlier.
Yeah. Any comments or questions regarding that amended motion? An amendment. Hearing now, we are going to vote on the amendment to start with. Roll call please, Ricky.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yeah.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Carl Naughtie.
Yes, that motion is approved. We will now go back to the motion that we had that had a, a, a first and a second regarding number polls, policy number one, two, three, approving that for first reading. Any further comments regarding that motion? Hearing none, roll call please Ricky.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yes.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
No.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Carl Naughtie.
Yes, so approved. With that, we will move on to item C, the collective bargaining agreement. Is the recommendation administration at the Board of School Directors approve the three-year contract to Kushtown Area Teachers Association effective July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
If emotions are a second.
Second.
Motion a second, any comments or questions regarding item C? Hearing none, roll call please Ricky.
Michelle Batts.
Yes.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Present.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Carl Naughtie.
Yes, so approved. I know we have both Mr. Ashman and Mr. Hartford in the audience, just like to thank the Kushtown Area Teachers Association for their willingness to work with the board and really appreciate the early bird and look forward to, to great relationships through two thousand twenty-five. So thank you in the Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks. With that, we'll move on to item D, the pug mill for K at K A H S art. Is the recommendation of the facilities committee that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of a pug mill VPM sixty vacuum power wedger from Peter Pucker at a cost of seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Peter Pucker, so we have a motion right in the.
So moved, Dennis.
Second, Eric.
Motion a second, any comments or questions regarding item D?
We just hear a little more about the pug mill.
Peter Pucker.
Peter Pucker pug mill.
Mr. Hoffman is here. I know it was reviewed, I was on the, the facilities committee allows you to basically recycle the clay, correct?
Pug the pail of tasty.
Any other comments or questions regarding item D?
And then also, when Mr. Hoffman presented, there is a growing enrollment in the art department, so there's interest in working with the clay, so this will allow them to reclaim old dried out clay and rehab it so that it can be used. So it'll be good for the, the student, the students who want to take these classes and there is growing interest in it.
Excellent.
Other comments? Hearing none, roll call please Ricky.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Mike Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yeah.
Carl Naughtie.
Yes, so approved. Next is item E, the Miller Flooring Refinishing is a recommendation of the facilities committee that the Board of School Directors approved Miller Flooring to screen and coat the high school gym floor at a cost of five thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-one cents and the middle school gym floor at a cost of three thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
The motions are a second.
Second.
Motion a second, any comments or questions regarding item E?
This is the annual.
This is the annual maintenance at the standard cost, I believe, right? Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call please Ricky.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yeah.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Carl Naughtie.
Yes, so approved. Next is item F, seal coating. It is the recommendation of the facilities committee that the Board of School Directors approve martelli seal coating and striping to seal coat and re-stripe the middle school parking lot at a cost of nineteen thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars. The Kushtown Elementary School parking lot and playground at a cost of eighteen thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars. And the Greenwood Landheartsville Elementary School playground at a cost of two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any comments or questions regarding item F, the seal coating?
I just had a question, none, none of these areas are areas that we were looking to read. Okay.
Any other questions regarding item F? Hearing none, roll call please Ricky.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yeah.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yeah.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Carl Naughtie.
Yes, so approved. Next is item G, HVAC preventative maintenance contract. It is a recommendation of the facilities committee that the Board of School Directors approve Burns Mechanical to add preventative maintenance of unit ventilator and fan coils to our existing contract at a cost of thirty-three thousand three hundred eighty dollars. This will be paid for by E S S E R funds. Have a motion. Motion is our second.
Second.
Motion a second, any comments or questions regarding item G? Hearing none, roll call please Ricky.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yeah.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Carl Naughtie.
Yes, so approved. Next is item H, the G E S fence. It is the recommendation of the facilities committee that the Board of School Directors approve Pro Mac fence, Pro Max fence to replace the existing fence at the rear of the Greenwood Elementary School at a cost of fourteen thousand nine hundred seven dollars. Have a motion.
So moved.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments regarding item H, the G E S fence? Hearing none, roll call please Ricky.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Michelle Batts.
Yeah.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Al Darian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Carl Naughtie.
Yes, so approved. Next is item I, the incident IQ agreement. It is the recommendation administration. Next is item I, the incident IQ agreement. It is the recommendation administration that the Board of School Directors approved the purchasing agreement for incident IQ at a cost of $5,337.50 per the attached. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding item I? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Michelle Batts?
Yeah.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item J, the J A M F Cloud Agreement. It is the recommendation administration that the Board of School Directors approved the purchasing agreement for J A M F Cloud at a cost of $4,820.33 per the attached. Have a motion?
So moved.
The motions are a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding item J? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Michelle Batts?
Yeah.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, approved. Next is item K, the Y M C A Summer Camp Agreement. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors approved the agreement with Y M C of Reading and Berks County Tri Valley Y M C A Branch to operate a summer camp at Quitztown Elementary School from June 20th, 2021 through July 30th, 2021 at no cost to the district. Have a motion?
So moved.
The motions are a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding item K, the Y M C A Summer Camp Agreement?
It was just a shame they weren't able to do this last year due to COVID reasons. Hopefully this year they'll be able to have a successful summer camp.
The other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Michelle Batts?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item L, a service level agreement for tax services. It is the recommendation administration that the Board of School Directors approved the service level agreement for tax services with the Berks County Intermediate Unit per the attached. Have a motion?
Ritter moves.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding item L? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Michelle Batts?
Yeah.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item M, the actuarial report. Is the recommendation administration that the Board of School Directors accept the proposal from the retirement advantage per the attached cost of the services $3,400. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding item M? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Michelle Batts?
Yeah.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item N, introduction of new business by board members. Anyone like to bring something forward to the board?
Mr. President, I have interest to do that. Thank you. This past weekend, Saturday, there appeared an article in the Reading Eagle reporting on a meeting that was held in Maxitoni Township regarding the proposed warehousing project. I just feel that we have a vested interest as a school district. You know, and of course, the article indicated what that could mean for our district in terms of revenue over a 10-year period, rather substantial. But I also feel we have a right to be concerned about the quality of life in our area and the kind of traffic that that's going to pour out onto an already quite busy highway. And particularly vehicular traffic being trucks. They're estimating that peak hour truck traffic for the one warehouse could be at 200 an hour and the other warehouse at 600 an hour. I understand, you know, it is owned industrial and certainly the use that's being proposed fits that particular area, but I think it is in our students' best interest as well as our community, our, the wider community to at least send a letter to the township Board of Supervisors, letting them know of our concern on this project. I think it certainly will have impact upon busing our students' safety and travel to and from school, whether they are bused or their parents take them. You know, there's, there's promises in this article by the people from Duke that they will do all they can to have their tenants let truck drivers know they should not use other routes, but I can assure you that that does not work because Main Street and Lions has become a truck route over the last few years, particularly since we do not have a local police force anymore. And to expect the state police to be here and, and be able to sit and watch and control some of that kind of traffic. We are all in, in dreamland if we think that's going to happen. I do not live in Maxitoni Township, but I am certainly a resident of the area and I have grave concern, especially when I look out in both directions from this area and over towards the Lehigh Valley, all of those warehouses, and I see the truck traffic in and around Route 100. And was just recently learned that some of those warehouses aren't even filled or, or partially filled. And then I worked over in the Hamburg area for quite a while as a pastor in that Route 61, PA, Pennsylvania 61 corridor. And all the warehouses that have gone in there, many of them still not filled and more warehouses scheduled to go in over there. If you could prove to me that we need more warehouses, I would love it. So I'm sure Duke thinks we need more warehouses because they're going to make a lot of money doing this. But I, I just think we need to have a voice as a school district and raise some of our legitimate concerns.
Is that a motion to draft a letter?
Well, yes, I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. And that we approve it at the next, to be approved at the next meeting.
So we have a motion and a second to draft a letter to the township?
Yes.
Reviewing the letter before it goes?
It would be voted on at the next. We could vote on it at the next meeting is my, would be my recommendation.
And I can put that in the motion. Similar letter with regard to the Greenwood Warehouse that's still being litigated. So I don't think this is something where we necessarily would need to reinvent the wheel.
I mean, just as far as the drafting a letter, if the board is interested in a letter, I mean, I would draft a letter, but we would just need some agreement on what the general feeling or content of that is. I mean, is it, is it a, is the board in favor, is the board in general? The warehouse is kind of what we would have to put in the letter, yes or no? Or believe that it's our place to comment on?
Or, 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 or do we believe as a board, it's our place to comment on that?
Right. Well, I think it would be limited to safety with respect to the students and transportation. Also, we would have to be concerned, I think, with Greenwood being where it's located, right by the 78 ramp. There's going to, you know, that truck traffic is either going to be on 222 going towards Allentown, or it's going to be working its way back into Quitztown on this, to get on to 737 to go back up to 78. So a lot of that truck, truck traffic is going to be going right by Greenwood eventually. So again, I, but the emphasis would be on safety and the transportation issues for our buses.
Well, I think
Dr. Ritter, in the article, did it say how many jobs were going to be?
Yes, it said it could create up to 1,500 jobs, but I'm also, you know, we live in an area where we are blessed to have an employer that probably employs most of the blue collar folks in our area that want to work in, in production or in that type of labor. And so you're going to be adding a whole lot of cars coming into this area in terms of traffic as well, because they're going to get their people from far and wide. It's not like we're hurting for employment means here. So, you know, it's a nice thing to say and it's fine. I want people to have good work and hopefully there'll be good paying jobs, but we have in East Penn Manufacturing pretty substantial employer for the size of our community, you know, this general area. And many people already come from outside of this area to work at East Penn Manufacturing, so.
Do, do we have, what sort of school bus routes are, would, you know, do we have going in that area?
Well, they're, they're obviously, those routes are all impacted from normalcy now with Long Lane being closed. So we're, we're actually operating an alternate routes there now, but there, there are a few buses that would use it. I can get that information and share it with the board this week. Current, I think we have two years left on the Long Lane project, if I'm not mistaken, the bridge project. So we can get a current bus route and then we can grab the bus routes from the year prior to Long Lane. I'll show that to the board.
Because I think one of our strong concerns with the Greenwood project was the close proximity to the elementary school. And I, and I, I get it that there's going to be some truck traffic that's going to result probably on 737 and 78 as a result of that, but that's sort of a little bit challenging to quantify. So I guess it's, it seems like a little bit of a different situation than what we were looking at with the other project. I guess that's my only, I mean, obviously I share concern about the the number of trucks. I guess I'm just not sure we're looking at exactly the same situation as we were with the Greenwood project.
I, I, I think though to say that we're only looking at 737 and traffic up through the Greenwood Elementary area is sadly going to not be the case. I think Long Lane is going to be extremely inviting for trucks to just head up that way and get up to 78 in, in that direction as well. So I, I think there are going to be a lot of bus routes impacted with less safe traffic than we presently have.
I can imagine people using normal pass Quitztown Elementary to kind of get around that segment of the 222 that clogs up before Long Lane.
So we, I guess we have a, we have a motion second, I assume the, the, Mr. Tim Chatten would write a letter that we would then review at the next board meeting to, to approve.
But I
My, 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 my comments are that I, I don't believe actually the school board should take a stance with this. I will vote no to the motion, just not whether a feeling of not feeling whether we should, whether my own personal favor for the warehouse or not, I just don't think it's a place that the school board should put their, this should, should put a a recommendation out on. It is a township issue. And the township supervisors understand that if you want to go to the township meeting and express your personal views, I recommend folks do that. Don't put it through the school board side. We'll be voting no. Dr. Darian?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Carl. The, the, the problem, I, I agree, I agree with Carl. I also agree with Dr. Ritter in terms of the problem, but I think Carl's points well taken. As, as a past life member of a borough council, I know a great deal of resentment when another governing body tried to tell you what to do. They, they're operating under constraints and requirements that we have really haven't studied. They've been working on this problem, I'm sure, for months. And for them to hear from another governing body as opposed to private citizens is almost insulting. I think I'm going to agree with Carl on, on this.
Other comments? On the other hand, we as a district are going to be impacted and we as a governing body that is tasked with looking after the best interest of the district. I, I, I don't see how we do not have a reason to, to have a stay in this.
Other comments? Thoughts? In the motion is to have Mr. Tim Chatten draft a letter that would be shared with the board at our next meeting, I believe, which would be the first, the first meeting in, in May. And then determine if we would approve that letter at that point in time to send to the Maxitoni Board of Directors versus the Planning Commission? Or both? Any other comments?
So to be close, it's just to draft the letter, period. That's it. And then
Correct.
The next.
We would have to approve it at the next meeting. Comments? Any others, any others to revote? Roll call, please, Ricky.
Mike Hess?
Hmm, no.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
No.
Michelle Batts?
Yeah.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
No.
Carl Nolte?
No. I believe it was five before you asked, right?
Yeah, it's five.
Motion, motion carries. Anyone else have any additional business they'd like to bring forward? That will move to public comment. Anyone in the public that would like to comment?
There's a woman in the back.
If you could step forward and state your name? I'm sorry, could you, could you come closer so we can hear? Okay.
The the economics around, you know, how much typically just take our operating budget divided The economics around, you know, how much typically just take our operating budget divided by number of students and that's what you come up with, you know, it's one method of coming up with the cost of a, a student. You know, but there's a lot of noise in that because for every student, you don't add an equal number of services, if we, if one student moves in tomorrow, most likely we just move them into a classroom and, and really they don't. Technically cost us anymore, you know, so that's kind of murky, to say exactly what that'd be, I guess, if, if we were expecting fifteen hundred. New residents in the district, we would expect increased cost of some level for, for, for instruction, but to really predict what that would be, it'd be difficult. For, and just for my, philosophically for me, you know, just. Don't really think of, the enrollment's the enrollment, the number of students we have today, we will serve them as well or better than any other district in the state. How many students we have tomorrow will serve them as well or better, you know, so in terms of, we need to monitor those numbers, but to make. To have an opinion whether one's better or the other, whoever our students are, are our students, we'll treat them that way and serve them the best we can, so. If we were to have five hundred new students, we'll welcome them and find a way to serve them too. And if we, you know, that's, that's just kind of philosophically, that's the way we have to look at it, we don't have the skin in the game as far as how many students there are.
Thank you. Any other comments, Doctor Myers online? Thank you, with that, we will move then to item eight, which is informational items, the condensed. We all had the condensed board summary report, the cafeteria fund report, student activity report. For the high school, middle school, D C I U, what happened, the B C I U news link. And the legislative report. Next is item nine, the upcoming public meetings and formative dates. On April twenty-sixth, we will have a budget and finance committee meeting at seven PM. Here in the middle school commons as well as via Zoom. On May third, there's a workshop school board committee meeting, excuse me, workshop school board meeting at seven thirty PM. Here in the middle school commons as well as via Zoom, on May tenth, policy and curriculum committee meeting. At six PM in the middle school commons as well as via Zoom, and on May tenth, there's also facilities. An extracurricular committee meeting at seven PM in the middle school commons as well as via Zoom. With that, one, one ten adjournment, looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll do that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, please stay safe and stay healthy, thank you.